So I brought you a hard copy.
Already?
Yeah.
Every municipality does things a little different, so I didn't know the workstation would be around a table. This is nice. I am with Dakota Pacific, a local real estate developer based out of Salt Lake City. And we are in agreement with David and Jason Chug, Jason's here, to look at options on this, on redevelopment of the land. So we've got some descriptions of the land parcels, but the main request here is to look at zoning. We have triggered, I guess we've triggered this process through a rezoning application. We understand that the general plan is really the first step in that. And looking at general plan, modifying that, then zoning, and subdivision. Right? And so this is just the beginning of a process to try to understand how we move forward. Because I didn't know it would be around a table, I didn't bring a lot of handouts. I brought some just in case we needed them, but.
Well, and I.
Were able to put out, do you know what I sent?
No, we have a funny thing, but I emailed it out to everyone. Yeah.
Well, I do have a few handouts here.
Is it not in Dropbox?
It is not, but it's in your email. Does your email not work?
Oh. Could I move it to Dropbox?
What?
I'm just saying, can I move it to Dropbox?
You can move it to Dropbox. Oh, yeah, you probably, oh, yeah.
You should be able to.
Yeah, you can. Yeah, yeah. I can move it to, want me to move it to Dropbox from here? Yeah, then we can pull it up. Yeah, let me move it. Here, Lou, this is that final draft, by the way. I'll explain it in our actual meeting, but that's the final. Okay, let's see if I can move.
He doesn't have the figures, but he did change that one figure, right?
What figure?
That one circle, put planning commission and engineer.
Yeah, you'll see it in there.
Is it?
I'll go through the whole.
Okay, I don't see any figures from here.
You have to go deeper into it. And I'll go through each of the changes in the meeting. Let's see. Okay, they should be in there, Brendan. I put them in.
They aren't there. No, that's why it's not there, but that's, as long as it's done, that's all we care.
It should be in there.
Not the diagrams.
The weird part is actually it's already in the, it's already in there. No, go back one.
Okay, that's, there, that's all I need to say.
For some reason, she already, she already put it in there, actually. Do the packet, the Chug PC work session. There you go.
Perfect. If you can just go to the next slide on that.
See, my copy didn't print the.
It didn't.
Oh, that's weird. Sorry.
But I, it's, it's there.
Maybe you guys fight over chairs.
We don't, here, sit right there.
So the, the subject land, you can see Associated Foods building to their, to the north. And then we've laid in the site plan that was submitted for the Black Pine property wherein they were going to extend. My map doesn't show the road that they're extending there, what the address of that is. They're extending the road off of Ruland White to the front of their, you know, larger building there to the north of it. And our proposed parcels then are just to the west of the Black Pine development there. And this is made up of three parcels today. And what we would do is consolidate those three parcels and then subdivide, leaving the southern portion of those parcels in, you know, the current zoning and basically then as we subdivide, taking the northern, northern portion of these parcels and.
Can I see the maps?
Applying for the, the zoning change and investing in industrial there.
To explain what he's saying on how it will be left. I'll pull up this one. So it'll look like that. So this will be the remaining residential down here. This is the portion that will be rezoned. This is Black Pine. So you visually can see.
And so that pink line is basically what we're proposing would be the new M1 boundary. Where today, the red line is the M1 boundary. And so we're not necessarily adding linear feet between, you know, residential and industrial. We're simply kind of expanding this jog out and around. Our objective would be to continue the road that Black Pine starts and continue it down in front of our property, creating a precedent for this loop road that the general plan ultimately wants and desires. And if we can go to the next slide, I think it shows that a little bit more detail than, and here I do have some of these handouts for those that would like something that's more in front of your face.
If we need a copy, Annie.
We've got four of them here, so we should be. Maybe share some.
Oh, you already. And I'll look at the.
Screened with. And so you can see the blue now becomes the future road that extends, or at least creates precedent where that connection would occur. We have obtained agreement from Associated Foods to be able to extend the road as shown here to the edge of our property. They understand the precedent that creates to ultimately be able to kind of go up and create. So now you have this road that's going through and what we're proposing is now both sides, at least for this section, you could consider moving the general plan along all of it, but both sides of that road would then be industrial.
So, so Associated Foods gave you permission for just in front of your parcels, right?
That's right. They gave us permission to extend it in front of our.
The blue part is, what's the status of that?
That would be kind of future to be determined. Whoever continues to develop along that line would extend the road.
So neither you nor Associated Food intend on doing that.
There is no commitment from Associated Foods to do it that we got. That's right. What we got is kind of the impact for our project. And so if you look at, can you scroll down just a little bit? So if we bring that stub road to the front of our property, I think then the question becomes, well, how does that work for fire access? And do we have a compliance solution here? You know, Black Pine is now egressing up through Associated Foods and Associated Foods is interested in expanding that and nor, nor I think has anybody else potentially, or at least some of the early feedback from, from the DRC. But we do have a lane, an existing lane that goes down to Far West Drive that is wide enough for fire access. Now, we know that there's no desire for any circulation between the industrial side of things and the residential side of things. There is no interest in putting more traffic on Far West Drive. And so what we're saying is this is emergency access only. There would be gates on both sides with a fire key that an emergency vehicle could access it. We've talked with the fire marshal. They have agreed that this is compliant and that this does add value. Not only does it add fire access to us, it adds fire access to Far West Drive on a second route. It adds far, uh, fire access to the Black Pine Development as another alternative, given kind of the constraint of this kind of corner. And I think there's a fire access at the end of this cul-de-sac as well, but it does provide another reasonable option for them that they liked. The, the things that they requested was that it's gated so that people don't, you know, it doesn't get blocked. And that the paving is worked through with them, most likely they're, they're going to ask for asphalt versus some kind of other compacted material that would handle the weight of a fire truck. And so given those things, they, they said they were okay. And they felt that this was compliant and enhancing for the area to do it. And again, that's all subject to details that have to be worked through in the site plan.
They have no problem with the increased traffic load on their road that you would create. I mean, all your people are going to be using the road they're creating through.
Have you talked to Black Pine?
Yeah.
Black Pine is a public road. They're dedicating that. So they don't really even get to say, but it's true. Black Pine has generally been supportive of the development of, of ours next to them. Partially their screening, their screening requirements change what they like, but, right? Because they have less residential to screen against. Associated Foods appreciates it because they're not going to have residential up against their future development if they develop south. They like this idea of industrial on both sides of that road. From a traffic perspective, from a, you know, just neighbor perspective and nuisance perspective, they like that as well. Right? Now, instead of, if you look at what, what we're going to be doing, we're going to have backyards to backyards. And then we're going to have a bunch of parking. So if we go to the next slide, you can look closer into our site plan. I think that's what we have here. Sorry, this is just a elevation of what the building may look like, so you understand the character and type of building. These are typical tilt, tilt wall type construction. Thirty feet in height is kind of what we're, we're showing here. Warehouse distribution. Yeah, so this is the specifics of our site plan. Sorry, I'm getting my handout sorted through here. So that everybody has one of those. So we're proposing on the site, and again, this is a zoning discussion, but just so that there's full transparency of what we're doing, we're proposing two buildings. One on the north, one on the south. There are some users that are interested in being adjacent to Associated Foods that have expressed interest in potentially purchasing one of the buildings upon completion or, or leasing it. We understand the screening requirements, but you can just see how this parking now also creates some buffer between the residential, right? I know there was concern about setbacks between residential and commercial and industrial or M1 type manufacturing. We have, we meet the setback requirement and some. We understand the lighting, you know, pollution requirement. We understand the fencing and screening requirement between the two, and we're showing that on the orange. And we'd have a truck cord in the middle. And so again, all your activity from trucks and all that is, is really screened and buffered from that residential because you're not going to be getting large trucks making noises along, along the south end of this, on this page would be the right side of it. So, so that's our proposed site plan for the area. And that, I think, hopefully gives you the, the feel of what we're trying to accomplish. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm kind of hearing your question, but the lane is right between here.
Sure, right here.
Yes.
So you're going to go, so that's. So it's. Are two separate property owners then?
Yeah.
The same landowners own all this, all the way through to the land to Far West. So I, this I don't think is shown correctly. We actually own the parcel all the way through.
Oh, okay.
That emergency access road, does it, you guys already having, uh, things worked out with the people who own that?
It's David and Jason Chug did on that, yes.
When you look at this.
If you look at the parcel map itself, it does show it all the way through.
So this little line goes all the way through.
Yeah. If you guys are looking at this one.
Yep.
Oh, actu- actually, this isn't even.
I was gonna say, I just showed him the bottom one, yeah.
At this, you can see this line here starting. It goes all the way through. If you were to look at the parcel map.
Perfect.
Yep, well, that makes sense.
So in this situation, what we're going to do is I'm going to let you guys ask any questions you may have. And then we shut off public comment and then we just have a discussion. So I want to make sure if you guys have questions.
Public comment. I'm part of the public in this.
Yes.
You're telling me to be quiet at a certain time.
It just won't allow you, I won't allow the comments back from, it becomes just a discussion to the planning commission. So I, well, I'll let you guys start.
I have a quick question for you.
Great.
During the winter, snow removal.
Yep.
Plowing the snow back in that parking lot in that corner. Who's going to maintain that access road for fire?
Yeah, so the same service contract that we have for our parking lot would be plowing the service road.
Or would be stacking snow up through there?
They would be, wouldn't you say there'd be sn- stacking snow? I don't know that we've designed exactly on our site plan where snow would be stacked. There's certainly some opportunities to be able to have some snow storage here. We could talk about some other snow storage if we needed to jog out along here. We, we can design and plan for snow storage.
That's going to be huge because.
They'll have to keep that fire road clear. Yeah, yeah.
And if it's behind a lock gate?
Right. They'll have to, they'll have to back up or open the gate and maintain it.
Open the gate. So, so, so the lock box holds a key to the gate and the fire department holds a key to the lock box.
And then whoever is maintaining your snow removal would probably have a key.
To the gate, exactly.
Currently, Black Pine is required to put a eight-foot-tall fence on the west side. Are they looking at your proposal? Well, no, but it would no longer be residential.
Right.
So.
It wouldn't on this side?
No, no, on the west side it wouldn't.
On the west side.
Butting them.
Side of Black Pine.
Right.
The west side of Black Pine currently is obligated to put an eight-foot-tall fence.
Here, th- this is where you're referring to.
That's what I'm referring to.
And now we would be required to put it here instead. Is that right?
Depending on the process of.
What I'm saying, the, the, I'm just wondering what the, what the mindset of Black Pine is. I think, oh, well, we're, we're not, suddenly we're not going to have to put up, we're not going to have to have all the restrictions for a budding residential on the west side because of this. You see where I'm going with this?
Exactly where you're going, yeah.
Is that a concern?
Uh, I'm simply saying I could see why they would have a smile on their face for that.
But depending on when this gets rezoned and when they start construction.
The sequencing is, is critical here, yeah.
Yeah.
Is this still the, I can talk.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll tell you. I'll, I'll ask you to sit back. Okay? You're good. You're free to talk.
What is the distance between your southwest corner and that house, that setback house? I believe it's the Howard House.
Can you point to me the house that you're referring to?
Well, the house is right there. There's a house right there.
So you're seeing.
There's a house right there.
This house here.
One of these houses is, is the Howard.
I, I don't know for sure. I know this was like, so this drive aisle is 24.
Yeah, this, these are farm buildings, as I recall.
Yeah, I was just trying to get.
This is actually a residential dwelling.
I was just trying to get a scale. I think, I think this drive is like 25, 30. If I remember right, the distance here was like 50 to 60. So you're probably fit, I, I, I can pull a quick measurement, but it's probably 100.
I have GeoGizmos pulled up anyway, so I actually could do that if you want.
Yeah, that's the one we're talking, that's, it's that house, right?
Yeah.
Right. Here.
Yeah.
This house right here.
Yeah.
So if I quickly draw it just to, the property line's not changing, so.
So we've talked a lot about flex. Is these, some of these buildings flex kind of?
You're probably about 50 feet.
That's what I would have guessed.
Yeah, I mean, 50 feet from the property line or 50 feet from the buildings?
Sorry, just from the building. So if you take their house to where you would.
It's 50 feet there and then we have another 50 plus feet or so.
Yeah, just, yeah, sorry, just a property line. Yep, exactly.
If you're talking building to building or if you're talking property.
Yep.
Um, sorry, your question. Yeah, so when we talk about flex, a lot of times it's smaller industrial buildings and it's kind of the size and scale of the building that'll kind of determine smaller users will come in and you could certainly get a flex user who's interested in a little bit more of a different space than just open, open warehouse. These start to exceed the, the size of that a little bit, but our bays, you can see, are 54 feet wide by 160. So you can lease this thing into smaller places where you could get a flex type user and, and, and make it pretty, pretty viable. I don't know that this is the kind of building that's going to attract a lot of that, right? This is a little bit too large for your typical kind of flex definition.
Trade or something like that.
It's, it's, it's going to be your local contractors, right? With a small office that needs more house back there. There's some food distribution folks that, like I said, are interested, food storage folks who are interested in being close to Associated. Those are the kind of tenants that we anticipate, you know, three, 4,000 feet of office. It's the rest kind of in high bay warehouse type use.
Any other questions?
Do you have a timeframe at all on this? I mean, obviously pending approval and all that, but I'm saying, when, when in your mind would be the earliest construction on this?
You know, because of the long, right, we're going to go general plan.
No, forget all that. I'm saying, let's assuming.
I'm just saying if that's nine months.
If you had approval right now for everything.
Yeah.
When, when would your startup time be? Or realistically, you're talking a year out, two years out?
Yes, no, six, no, I, I think it'd probably be within 12, 12 months, we could be ready for construction. Right? Because we would just then need to finish up design, get the building permit and then kind of wait for the right weather window to be able to construct. I will say there's a clear dependency on Black Pine on, on their road here, right? Like.
That's one of my, and I'll voice maybe more of my concerns when we close public comment, but that's one of my concerns. This whole thing is dependent on a road that might not go in.
Yeah.
Which, which is, is fine.
For long-range planning, is that a concern though?
I don't know. I mean, what happens if something in the market changes and we've dedicated this area to an M1 zone and Black Pine decides to sell off and no one ever builds there and you have no access and now we have a chunk.
Then we could certainly step in and build Black Pine's road, and that's one option.
Yeah, that's true.
It's, it's just the finances of that, what, what, what we'd have to work through, but whoever that landowner is, we can certainly work with. I know Associated had some interest in kind of working through because they, they got a secondary access. They may participate, so I don't know exactly how that would play out. But I'm, I guess I would just say from a long-term plan, does this make sense for M1? Knowing that a road wants to go through here, knowing that both sides of that, in my mind, there's real benefit to having both sides of that future road be industrial, just from a.
I would agree. One of the things I would like to see, if at all possible, would be pull this road farther to the north so we get away from that cul-de-sac at the end of Far West Drive, so people think they can connect to it.
The corner of the, the blue elbow.
Oh, yeah. Well, there's a house at the, at the end of that cul-de-sac, so.
Yeah, I just drew that dotted line as.
I, it's been a concern multiple times in the past. Once that's punched through, Far West Drive is a through street.
Right. So is there a way to pull this?
Well, if anything.
Road farther to the north.
Why would we not punch, why would it punch through the cul-de-sac? Why wouldn't it just continue where it ends in? Dead ends. There's literally a house.
Yeah, that Associated Foods property north of that road.
Yeah.
The future road? Yeah, that's all Associated Food.
Well, if you can work with Associated to move that over because that's what they're doing now.
Yeah, what we've done right now is we've basically split the rest of the property line. That's why we brought it as far south as we did.
You're not wrong.
Is because half that road is on our property and half that road is on Associated property, once it, once it runs straight east-west. And as you continue to go west, we thought that that is a fair and equitable way to punch that road through is make sure that each, each property is dedicated in half of the road. How it turns, I mean, that was just kind of an example, and how you guys want to tie that in, we're, we're open to that. But that's why we did what it is. If you guys say our long-term planning really wants that further north, don't, don't bring it down. That's just going to be, have to, we'd have to go back to Associated and say, look, this, this is now the city's plan. They, they want to push this road north. Can we negotiate a deal? It certainly complicates things by, by not putting, you know, half and half. But when you turn that corner, I feel like you could turn it earlier. I mean, that's, I think that's, that's long-term planning.
And if you look at, I was gonna say, if you look how it kind of squeezes triangularly, that eventually that, that road wouldn't be viable where it is because in order to have the same amount of M1 on the south side of the road as you're getting, it would need to curve anyways at some point. You know what I mean?
So it's Associated, nothing with that road.
It's a good thought.
When I, when I drew that road in there.
Hold on.
That has not been the commitment to date. There's, there's that little corner piece that.
What road are we talking about? The one in front of your spot?
Yeah, his question is, do they participate in it? And that hasn't been part of the discussion yet.
I was just wondering, because they, they warehouse already over in the Weaver Industrial Park, and that road would be great for them rather go up and around to go through and stuff, and then.
They're willing to dedicate the land. They have given us that, so.
When we put that, when the road team put this road together, it was further to the north. Because what would the intention was? To get it.
Away from.
Away from the single-family dwellings.
That's correct.
I think, are you saying, though, you said that if Associated does choose to expand, they're thinking of expanding more south?
Well, it's the only way they can expand.
You'd start to really, you'd really start to cut their parcel. You'd really start to cut their parcel and you'd end up with this weird waste piece for them on the other side of it.
So would it be waste? Why not just put buildings on both sides of the road?
I'm just saying you might not have enough.
I'm sure it'd be waste.
I'm just saying you may not have enough depth to put a building that really works. Black Pine's road is already turning, if you see, right? It's already designed and planned to turn south. So I assume your, your master plan wants it to come at least somewhat south. And, and so then how much land do you have left to put a meaningful building on?
Yep. That's definitely, from a utility standpoint, when we talked about this in the development meeting. And I mean, this is something you'll all have to work out. I'm not saying that it's a deal killer, but there is no storm drain out there. Your property doesn't flow the right direction. So this site has to be built up significantly. Either to match pine, match Black Pine site or to figure, I mean, you, you have to have your storm drain, your detention has to go somewhere.
It does. Yeah, we have done a preliminary study on that, just to understand what that would look like after that meeting.
Yeah.
Stormwater already wants to flow north, northwest, right? So that's the first thing. It's not going to flow south toward residential. That's, that's, that's important. But that little waste piece that is created from the curve as it comes down from Black Pine's, that would end up being a detention pond. And if we build up. Yeah, yep.
Which is interesting because your property doesn't flow that way, so it's going to be really hard to get your detention to flow against your grades.
It's not as difficult as, based on the preliminary studies, as, as you may think. Like, I can't remember what Black Pine's building up, if it's three or four feet.
Yeah, three or four feet.
If we build up a similar amount, we'd still be below them.
Okay.
But that would be able to get us to that detention. That would be able to get us to that detention area and then tie in to their, to their.
Their storm.
Their, their storm. I will.
Your detention base, you say, is in this little triangular piece right here?
It's going to be, yeah, in this waste piece right there. It's going to be.
And that, that is owned by Chugs, that little piece?
This is not. This is part of the Associated agreement.
Associated Foods.
Because today this is.
Give you that for detention base.
Well, they're giving them the road too.
It becomes a waste piece for them. They can't use it. Yeah, the water does want to flow north, northwest. So it flows here. It's a depth, it's a depth concern. I will say that we know that we can, we can take, can't remember if it's an inch or three quarters of, like, we can take all the storm water and we can store it between. We can take all the storm water and we can store it between what's in the truck court and what's here. The question is, is is does this need to be deep enough in order to hold all that such that it doesn't want to flow naturally into the utility in the street? At which time we could hold all a full storm, but we may want to slow trickle out of pump. Just if there's a little bit extra depth there, be able to pump it up. But but the important thing is that we're not reliant on that pump for a storm or and then we just slowly trickle it out over a day or two.
I guess my point in that is with this site being so much closer to residential, this site is going to be built up three to, I would say, five feet. And just to flow for storm drain and being that much closer to residential, it's going to be that much taller. Is my my point to that. Right, but it'll be, I mean, Black Pine is already three to four feet higher, but it's set back, you know, three, four hundred feet from residential. This is that closest a hundred essentially feet from residential and will be built up four or five. Just as so I want everyone to have a visual. It's not that I'm.
We will, we will clear the setback hurdle. Um, we we will, we'll clear that and more. So we're, we have plenty of buffer for that, but if you're just talking about visual impact, that's.
That's all I'm saying in that.
This is an interesting question. You know, we have a requirement of eight foot tall visually obscuring wall. That's from the surface area of the ground, not from the four feet of buildup.
No, but that will become, that will become the four feet of build.
So you're saying the wall is only four? Okay, no, you understand what I'm saying. You understand what I'm saying. If so, effectively, it's a twelve foot barrier.
Barrier.
Four feet of which is soil.
Yeah, right, right. If you want to make a comment, you can now.
Yeah, so when you're talking about building the area up, we have to understand that whole parcel area is already solid.
Right.
So.
But but that residential is still low, so the residential is gonna sit here and your commercial is gonna sit here, no matter what.
The residential will change.
Does it? Does it dip down lower than residential out there?
Oh, it does? Okay, okay.
If you build it up three or four feet, it would end up only being about maybe a foot above the residential.
So the property in the front slopes down and all the way to the back to the north?
So if you take the south line of that property.
Yeah.
Where it's cut.
Yeah.
All the ditch line.
Okay, and it goes.
And ditch line, from the south side of the ditch line to the north side of the ditch line, there's a significant.
Okay.
Grade right exactly where that cutting lines.
Okay, okay.
And then everything where this project would be, everything flows to the northeast. Exactly where Steve was just pointing to that where retention pond can be.
Okay.
That entire acreage flows right there. It's actually a little bit of wetland in that northeast portion of the natural.
And that was the difference because our public works said everything flows northwest. So that's where my information was coming.
Is the surface area of that proposed detention pond adequate to cover all this imperious surface?
It is, yeah. That was the, I mean, this is preliminary engineering, just.
Well, I bet you understand.
To test viability, but yes, it 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 could hold the, and I don't know what all the city requirements are for for holding, but it it could hold a storm's worth plus. It's just all kind of about depth and again, are you gonna, i- i- if if we need to, we can go a little bit deeper and then use a pump to get some of that out if after the storm.
I mean, could you expand it to the southwest a little bit on the other side of that access there so you could have?
Yeah.
Well, that's the only thing I think will change a little is I think you'll have a end up with a wider detention basin because you're gonna have such a high ground level for water.
Yeah.
That it won't be that deep.
In that middle truck court, there's actually quite a bit of detention in that whole flow process as well because that becomes your low part and you do collect there and then it's. It collects there and then it ba- and then it starts trickling out to the other pond. So we're actually not just dependent on that because the whole truck court also holds water for us.
What other pond were you talking about? You said another pond. So you have this pond.
Black.
Saying the truck court itself between those buildings?
Be a pond.
Well, no.
Low point.
It it's designed such to hold water. There's tanks uh uh underground to hold water and then it flows to the pond. Then it will flow into the utility in the in the road.
Okay.
So you're gonna put in a doghouse system? Or what is it called?
An underground detention?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I I I need to confirm exactly with the engineers how that works. They just told me that that truck court will hold. Typically, it's done with underground tank systems. I with the water table as it is, I don't know if that's really possible. Or if they're just saying that just naturally is a low point and it will hold water.
But if you're building the site up, you might have the opportunity to grade it to make that site, that portion of it hold water.
My question next question. You're designing this for everything's good until you hit the hundred year flood or whatever. When when your capacity is reached, which way, where does the water end up? Where does the surface water end up flowing?
North northwest right now, but I mean, we will design to the city regulations on storm waters, not like this will be an exception to any other property.
Yeah, they'll have to pass all of that.
That that would be the same for any any property anywhere, right, in the city?
And the green is your landscape plan?
It's it's a proposed, yeah.
No, I'm, I mean, just that the area, this is configuration where you propose to put it.
That's right.
My other, and I I know I voiced this too to you, is I I still think that future road really needs to be put in. I I don't see the benefit that we're continuing to build all of this industrial space on a dead end. And with the problems we already have with Associated and, you know, Black Pine has done this access for their capacity and worked it out with the county. I have a really hard time letting more continue to build out this way without a true access that helps the flow of all this for for the M one use. And I know I've said that to you before, but.
I mean, your desire makes sense. It's it's obviously out of our control and um, it would be great to have. I think the question is, does it does it meet minimum requirements in people's minds without that or not? That's what we're here to.
It would actually benefit Associated because you'd get all those trucks off the road.
Well, and that was the what Public Works made the comment of is are we creating a whole nother problem in this piece that? Well, you have here, but this piece that the city has to enter through our, go out of our city to enter essentially. And with the problem here, I mean, what problem are we solving currently? This is not helping us solve any problems.
Does it help as residential versus industrial? I mean, I guess I'm asking residential could be built there today, assuming again it could meet threshold requirements. And this is just, is this use better than this use is really the discussion. I suppose what you're saying is it sounds like development's gonna happen. Now we gotta start thinking about these things. But we could turn and we could work with David and Jason and say, well, let's build residential instead. Is anything right now, the same, the same issues are kind of on the on the on the table. And yet that's, you know, that's an allowed use, so.
That's why we have general plans.
Yeah.
Because we look at the land and we figure out what's the best use of that land for the citizens of Far West and this case for the residents of Far West Drive.
I would say residential in this is significantly different than the M one impact.
Very different. They're not the same.
Yeah.
You mean because of traffic flow or?
Just altogether, your your density, your building per square foot is different, your your truck traffic, your, you know, all of that is very different impact than what, you know, two hundred thousand square feet is gonna do.
I'm also a little concerned if that future road, and there could be events that would block that, and that's the only egress out of that.
Yeah.
And suddenly this emergency road in Far West Drive is hammered by everything.
Well, and suddenly it becomes the only.
The only road, and that's a that's a definite possibility. If this road were continued all the way to to Associated Food, you have basically two egresses, none of which involves Far West Drive. You have any kind of impediment to flow, traffic flow on this side, then suddenly that's a declared emergency. And all of that traffic goes on Far West Drive, which isn't even a legal sized road.
Well, and that's my.
If I can caveat, that road is for emergency vehicles. It's not for truck traffic in any scenario.
But if this ever gets blocked off and never goes in.
I worry about the definition of emergency. Suddenly.
They wouldn't use it.
You're sure of that?
Yeah.
It's for fire trucks. It's for police.
That I do feel confident, but I've told you this before too. I don't agree on an emergency access going through Far West Drive on a road that's not a legal road that impedes an a residential neighborhood that's making a problem that they didn't ask for be their problem now. And I feel strongly about the emergency access not coming onto Far West Drive.
I think.
That is not fair to the residents.
It's not a legal road, but I don't.
It's not a legal.
From a fire department perspective, it meets the criteria, so I guess I don't know.
It does not.
It's not legal width.
Yeah.
Not even close.
It it does not meet our standards as a city road.
Yeah, that I understand.
A fire truck will go on it.
The fire marshal said, I can get my truck through there.
I'm sure he can. I'm not.
But from our standpoint, from like a development standpoint and a city standpoint, it's not a legal conforming road. Hence why no other development can go on it, all of those.
Being a property manager of industrial, I can tell you, we don't have emergency vehicles to show up to our buildings often.
But think about.
This is a very one off situation.
Think about this impact though, because I I agree with you. You're very right. You probably will never have someone use that. However, you take, say you're the mayor of Far West right now and you've allowed this big industrial use behind a residential city quiet area. You have a big fire and you've got thirty fire trucks now using this access and you've it you've impeded on this quiet residential neighborhood that didn't ask for that. It's not that a house there was on fire. They didn't ask to not get to their home tonight because your building's on fire. And those, that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying that, because these things happen. I'm not saying that that.
If a fire were to happen, fire trucks would come on the road and it would make, it would make noise and nuisance if.
On a road that already can't fit.
I will just bring up again, it also improves fire access for Far West Drive.
And you're not wrong there.
There is some mutual benefit. One has to weigh both of those sides of that.
Do you want to make another comment?
Yeah, I think just to kind of dovetail into what Steve mentioned earlier, like I I understand. I've lived on Far West Drive for a lot of years. So I understand what you're saying, like we had a tree fall down that impeded Far West Drive until we could get our tractors over and pull it off. Like I give it, it's a small road. If something happens, it affects the residents. To my point of piling on to what Steve said earlier, the possibility of emergencies happening or the infrequency in which they do happen versus if we were to run a plan and request thirty houses would be built in the same area, what would affect Far West Drive a lot? And I guarantee it would be thirty houses where traffic would affect.
And.
Far West Drive a lot more than a single access road that maybe gets used a few times per year.
Well, and the hard part on our side is that is solely our job is to remember how the residents are impacted. And currently on Far West Drive, you would not be able to get thirty more houses because of the road not meeting the width requirement, so.
Only that, it's a dead end road and we've already exceeded the house.
Sorry, that's the, yeah.
Well, one house is one thing, subdivisions are another. I know, and and decisions made in the past are not necessarily decisions made in the future.
Right, but it does set precedent for.
Right.
One more house.
Right, both of you are not wrong in that respect, but what you have to remember in our position is it really is, how does our decision that, you know, changing this or leaving it, how does it affect the residents? And that's what we have to outweigh on both sides. Yeah. Yeah, I'm not, I.
Status quo. If you want to answer frankly, you asked the question, that's the answer.
Always has impact.
Yes.
Always has impact.
Well, and Black Pine doesn't have emergency access onto Far West Drive.
It's status quo, it's status quo.
But different, they don't come off of Far West Drive at all. There is. This, well, this has an emergency access. Black Pine has no emergency ma- access off of Far West Drive, zero.
That was understood from the.
That was understood. Everything is directed to the.
Conversation, we told them that.
They don't have access at all. So that and that that is a diff- a true difference. But I I see, right. And the the other huge. And the other big difference with Black Pine is their piece is set quite a bit further away from any affected residential. Don't get me wrong, I'm not, I'm not picking a side. Right, but you're you're gaining a lot of ground on the residential.
From a long term planning perspective, I still contend you're actually reducing residential impact again because of the street, because you're putting backyard to backyard. I do thi- uh, and maybe it's kind of kick the can down the road kind of thinking, but I guess I'm struggling to see how long term planning, the residential is worse off under this scenario. I do hear what you're saying. If fire trucks come in, that's gonna be an impact. I, you know, we 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 just all have to weigh what what that is.
I think in fairness to the citizens though, we ought to find out how the residents of Far West Drive feel about it. Because they're the ones most impacted by this decision. In in making an evaluation and in considering changing the general plan. It's incumbent upon us to find out what the citizens that live on that street feel about that decision.
Ask one more question?
Yeah.
We keep talking about emergency vehicles. If there were a fire, is that the only route that they would ever use or?
No, they can go this way too.
There wouldn't be anything stopping them from going down this new road.
Right.
So that future road was built, would they still need that?
No, they wouldn't need that.
We could abandon.
If it was built all the way through.
We could agree to abandon that.
If it was built all the way through, you just need two accesses.
Would they need that?
And we would be, we would be agreeable to, you know, put something in there to in an agreement or 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 whatever it is to abandon that secondary access in the event that there's a a a another option. But yeah, it's not only would the Far West Drive be impacted if there's a fire, it's they're gonna be impacted if there's a fire and the other road's blocked.
Right, yep. Okay, you got lucky because I left public comment open the whole time. Um, thank you for being kind. Do we have some direction for them as to what we would like to see next? Do we need to maybe, I don't know the exact legalities of it, but schedule a public hearing? Do we want to have?
And allowing the citizens to voice their concerns would be very appropriate in this case. In fact, we we have public hearings every time we change the general plan, so there's nothing new about that.
Are you okay with that? Okay, and that checks off that.
I assumed it would be the same, yeah.
Yeah, and that checks off your box too, that if this gets moved forward, you've already held a public hearing essentially, so.
To me, I think we find out the probability of that road getting.
It won't.
Unless somebody built it, like these guys are.
Yeah, unless these guys are Associated Foods. But Associated Foods has expressed interest in not building it.
Associated Foods has full control of the more south piece of it, right? Like you can continue to go east west, but eventually Associated has to agree on the north south, um, unless you guys do, you know, eminent domain and take it over and say, we're building it, but yeah.
Right. Yeah. Okay, let's do that. I will. That's not as easy as it seems.
That's not a fun thing to do.
That's not, but I'm just saying.
Absolute last resort.
Um, okay, does that give you direction? I'll get with Lindsay tomorrow and see when. I think unfortunately you have to come to our next planning commission meeting to set the public hearing.
Oh, really?
It's a weird thing of ours. And then I might be wrong on that and I might be able to get you on the city council meeting. I'll talk to Lindsay.
They did go to the first one, if you recall, in December and it was, let's do a work session, so we have had that discussion, but I don't know if that changed.
Let me see what I can do there and then no matter what, we have to do a fourteen day notice.
Materials that I presented.
Perfect.
Good for the public hearing, okay.
And then I believe the only thing, and you may have already, when you submitted the rezon application, did you give Lindsay um, the three hundred foot radius neighbors? Okay, so she's good to go there. Okay, okay, I'll get with her tomorrow and then touch base with you. And then we can do that and we'll have some dates.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. Stay seated for two minutes. Not you, sorry, sorry. I have that effect on people. Okay, so quickly, because this will be on our agenda tonight. Jacob made, and I said emailed it all out to you. He made all those changes we talked about. To quickly reiterate just on what he was able to change and what he was not. Um, we changed the definition in the development subdivision development committee to include the designees like Lou wanted. Um, then we did the few, well, I have a question on one of the grammar errors. We accepted all the red lines and everything we talked about. I asked him about business days versus working, well, business days versus days. He changed what he was allowed to in the document. So he added a couple places, he added business days, but he said, we were exactly right that the state purposely uses some of these business versus uh, business versus days.
So they intentionally make, do use them both.
Yes, so he fixed the ones he was allowed to in the document. Yes, so he fixed the ones he was allowed to in the document and then, um, obviously left the ones he was not. So that's the major change, he fixed the flow chart to say city engineer and planning commission. Um, I had him change the one sentence where it goes, uh, that they shall be, they shall attend our public meeting, which, yeah, that they shall, which then added another component in, let's see, do you have a holdup? Oh, no, I was like, you're getting ready. For section C under pre-application, it then just specifies the same thing, that the requirement is that the applicant attend all public meetings to hold, to be held to discuss the application. However, the city may waive, um, the final plat requirement on anything they want. So we changed that, I asked him about the tabling situation, like, if something gets tabled, what happens? And he said, basically, it just leaves them in that si- that step. Because if they're tabled, it's not a decision, so it hasn't moved them forward. So he's like, you just ask them to come back at that point. Because remember, we asked if they get tabled, does it start the review cycle again? He's saying, no, basically, they never finished that cycle, so they stay there, come back, and then they finish.
What stops the city from indefinitely tabling?
Yeah.
Well, tabling is not indefinite, tabling cannot be indefinite. Tabling is, we will, what is the action, what's next? Uh, indefinite would be a denial. So a tabling is intent to continue.
Have a reason for tabling, justifiable reason.
You didn't show up, so we'll table, give you a chance to come back next time, or you're missing something, come back again.
Yep, so it's given, so tabling has to be with an action, to say, here's what you need to do to come back. Uh, then the last thing was the post-approval actions where we talked about the thirty days. It was funny because Jacob laughed when I brought it up, he's like, I knew one of you would catch that. I'm like, well, I deal with it on the other end, so we changed that per our other city requirement, is that, yeah, they have twelve months to report, which is congruent with everything else, so. Yeah, thirty days, I'm like, I can barely get out of a meeting in thirty days. Um, then everything else was good. So those, he made all of those adjustments and the final copy, the one that I want you to look at, um, do we really have ten minutes?
I don't know, it sounded like you did them all.
Well, the one that you wanted me to make a grammar change to.
Yeah, is there a, a?
I think it.
Legally, it's what, yeah, it's, it's in.
Well, it's this one where it says that preliminary application and once the applicant submits a complete final application, that A.
I don't, I've, I've got it in front of me.
You're right on the page.
Well, there's nothing there, so.
It should be right there, well, no, go one back, you're, you're two, no.
This is my copy.
No, sorry, here.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, it's here.
Right here.
Okay, here we go.
So it says, shall review and provide feedback to the applicant up to one review cycle. His understanding a little bit was, because they can be tabled and it might not be completed, that they get one full cycle, but that we have the ability to also waive that.
Would we ever waive the final review? That was my comment, and I can't, uh, it's, it's not worth losing sleep over.
Yeah.
But I, my.
I'm happy to change it.
There is no occasion where we would ever waive the final review, so.
The only thing I see.
I understand why they put it in there.
In the verbiage is, if we do up to, then it allows us to have that, but it also allows us to waive it. If we say, in one review cycle, we always have to have it.
And I understand that, my question is.
Would we ever?
Ever waive it, and I can't see any reason we would ever waive not having the final review, but that's not, that's not.
Do we just leave it in there because it gives us?
It's.
Okay, so I did not change that.
It doesn't, it doesn't affect the way we operate.
Okay, and that's why I, I, so I didn't change it because I'm like, this allows us to have both, the other one only allows us to have one. Okay, we guys, you guys, we killed it on that, and Jacob was so happy and so excited, and I was very appreciative.
With him, you did thank him profusely, right?
Yes, he was, he's been awesome, so he's working on the checklist now, so that'll be in future. So thank you, guys, sorry for all the extended work sessions, but get used to him. No. And I love that you all listened too, it's the best thing ever. I gotta get set up. Sorry, we got plenty.
Better be on point.
I'm not, I'm sure she's got.
I'm never wrong, and I'm always on point. What I imagine in my head.
Me too.
Let's see on this. Spencer Knight one.
Greg, I don't know who I asked last time, do you want to lead in the pledge?
Sure. I'd be happy to.
Brandon?
Yep.
Do you want to do the prayer?
Sure.
Okay, thank you for doing the other stuff, the computer stuff too. Yeah, we do.
Two different sets of plans on that.
On which one?
Knight one.
Two different sets?
Yeah. Two different sets of plans.
Hold on, let me look at that.
Yeah, when they move, scroll down, otherwise, sorry, up.
Oh, the old schedule verse.
It says existing building, or new building right here, but on the other set of plans, it's a retention pond.
Lex building back there.
Yeah.
Bay doors in it.
Well, this was before texting. Yeah, scroll down to that next one, improvement plans.
Boy.
Just right there, it's a retention pond, and on the other plan, he shows a building.
Where they show the other building here.
By the way, I'm going to be one volunteering for that housing committee.
Oh, good, oh, that's a good reminder.
Just, it's. I talked to David Chan, I says, I don't want to be one of our documents, but I certainly want to be involved.
All right, that's a good.
There's your future retail right there.
Specifically asked about that, okay, that's wonderful.
Your future retail.
Okay, so this is the one they want to do, right?
Yeah.
Showing detention base right there.
I'm looking at that other one.
Good reminder.
Backwards.
Oh, she already put it on there, actually, she's good.
So where's the? Building, I don't know, show. Got a showing of building alley.
We're going to call it seven o'clock. Oh, seven, it's actually six-thirty, I gotta remember that. Okay, we're going to call it close to six-thirty. Welcome, everyone, we're going to start with a prayer from Greg, sorry, a pledge, the pledge from Greg and a prayer from Brandon, everyone would stand.
I want to hear a pledge from first. Uh, please stand, remove your hats and follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our kind and gracious heavenly father, we're indeed grateful for this beautiful day, we're grateful for the weather that we've been receiving, the moisture, we're grateful for our wonderful country and for this great city that we are able to serve and the citizens thereof. Please bless us that we will be able to be wise and prudent with what we review today in this meeting, that, how it affects the citizens, and please bless those who are serving the city, help and protect them and our country, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Okay, first on our agenda is public comment. This is open for items that are not on the agenda. So if you have something that's related to an agenda item, wait until that agenda item, but if it is something different, you're welcome to come up. Any public comment? Next is the report from the city council.
Good evening. Council met last Thursday. To begin with, there was, uh, public comments. Um, we had a current resident of Far West that addressed the council with some concerns about, um, the city looking at and can, uh, considering as part of their zoning, um, standalone accessory dwelling units. She has, uh, some situations with her current family, her parents, elderly parents, and she wants them close where they can help care for them. Um, the question was brought up about, um, townhomes, if that would be sufficient enough, and her indication was financially no. Um, but we assured her that we do have a housing committee and that those things are being looked at and encouraged her to come and attend the planning commission and city council meetings to, to follow that progress. Um, and she was very appreciative of the fact that she was able to at least be heard. Business licenses, we had, uh, three new, uh, um, applications. And the licenses were approved for Reed's Creamery, Creamery, excuse me, around the corner. Uh, Patro's Customs, which is formerly Ponies on the north end of town. And Blue Sky Energy, those were all approved. Um, the business license for Far West Auto was brought up again, and initially, there wasn't anyone here, it was tabled. However, someone did show up a little late because of the time change, apparently was not familiar with that. Um, so that was reopened for discussion. Uh, and you, you all probably know that the concern with Far West Auto was that there was a conditional use permit issued for their license, and they have not been compliant with that. And we, through advice from the city attorney, we were given an option of denying the license altogether or uh, issuing a, an approval for a time limit to give them the opportunity to conduct their business and bring it into compliance with the conditional use. And I don't know how familiar you are with that, but it has to do with, the vehicles that were in front of the building must be operational and able to be sold and driven off a lot. No unoperable cars. And, uh, there was a limit of the number of cars that could be parked there. And, uh, there was also a limit of the number of cars could be in the rear of the, uh, facility. I think that was twenty-five or thirty, I'm not sure, I didn't write that, thirty. So, the, uh, the business license was approved based on, they have thirty days to bring the front of the building in compliance. Anything in front of the building must be, uh, functional, operational and sellable. Um, and with an additional fifteen days for a total of forty-five, uh, to be totally compliant, bringing the rear of the, of the facility into compliance with the, um, conditional use permit. So basically, that's what they're sitting on. We, uh, we were given some assurances that they would definitely work on that, that that is, uh, an issue that they, uh, were willing to bring to, to city satisfaction. That was all for the, uh, for the business licenses. Council approved a motion to amend the general plan to allow for the commercial zone of, uh, approximately fourteen oh seven north, two thousand west, and the two additional lots. And we're all familiar with that, to bring that back into compliance with, uh, the rest of the area. Uh, and that's strictly, of course, the, to amend the general plan, not to actually do the zoning, that's your problem later. The council approved a motion to rezone, uh, the Beal property from A one to C two. Uh, we had a representative, uh, Dr. Butterfield, uh, that was representing his business, there he wants to expand his dentistry business. And, uh, so that fit right in with the rest of, uh, of what's going on with that particular property. Uh, council also looked at and approved, um, the addition of a vision insurance for the employees of the city, uh, which I was quite surprised to understand that we, that they didn't have that option in their insurance package. The gals in the office had done some considerable research on that, the increases, um, the cost was extremely reasonable. And, uh, so we, we approved that, uh, to be an option for the employee benefit packages. Um, council also approved an ordinance amending the compensation to the city attorney and the city prosecutor. And, uh, some minor changes in the wording with that, and to increase their salary to one thousand dollars per month each. We are very pleased with the service that we've been receiving, uh, from these two gentlemen, and, uh, we're, you know, within the guidelines of other cities, cities and areas for that increase. Last but not least, uh, one of my assignments is the, to be a member of the, uh, Legislative Policy Committee for the Utah League of Cities and Towns. And because currently state legislation is in session, there are some bills that, uh, are land use oriented, that I think are of significant interest for us to, to follow. Um, if you're interested, they can be looked up online, uh, there are four, I think, that, that were, we looked at, we, we met, we'd be meeting every Monday afternoon and going over the progress, but, uh, Senate Bill thirteen and Senate Bill eighty-six, for your benefit, you want to look those up, those are of some concern to the league and to the, uh, policy committee. Um, currently, as they're written, we're not in favor of. Uh, there are two House bills, House Bill number two eighty-nine and House Bill three oh six, uh, of similar situation with regard to some, um, of the land use, uh, legislation that is, uh, taking place. And currently, those are not, uh, favorable by the, the league and the committee. Um, as that progresses, each two, every two weeks, I'm going to be bringing you updates on those. Just because it's, you know, you're the body that's concerned with that type of legislation and have to deal with whatever comes out of the state, so. So we'll try to keep you as informed as, as we can with that.
If you could even email those out to us would be great if you, you know, since that's every Monday and we'll only see you every other week, so. If there's anything of interest, you're welcome.
I will be glad to do that, certainly. Yes. And that's all the business we conducted. Council reported on assignments. We adjourned at eight. So it was a lengthy meeting because we started at six thirty, so. Any questions for the city?
Senate Bill thirteen and seventy-six?
Eighty-six. Senate Bill thirteen and Senate Bill eighty-six.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, next, a public hearing to consider the request of a conditional use permit for Spencer Knight located at seventeen forty-one North, two thousand West for warehousing with twenty-five percent office space or detailing services or fitness services as allowed by the C two zone. Do we have a motion to enter the public hearing?
Motion to enter the public hearing?
All second.
Motion by Greg, second by Darren. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We are in the public hearing. Is there anyone here to question or ask anything about this one? Okay, seeing none. Do you wanna close the public hearing?
Motion, we close the public hearing.
Motion by Brandon.
Second.
Second by Lou. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Next, on to the recommendation to the city council, approval or denial of the request of a conditional use permit for Spencer Knight. Do you wanna come up, Spencer? State your name and address, please.
Spencer Knight and the address, the address we're talking about.
Or your home address, whatever you'd like.
I'll do that. So it's seventeen forty-one North, two thousand West, Far West.
Are there any questions after reviewing some of this?
I just have one. With the increase in, in building construction, does your detention basin still, have you had it engineered and you're sure it's gonna be adequate to cover the additional water coming off the hard surface?
Yeah, it's.
I can attest to that. Matt, it's been pre-planned. Yeah. And it's been pre-planned for even your future commercial or your future retail in the, to the, yeah, south.
Good.
Yep. Any other questions?
I had one, and I may have looked at the plan wrong, but on the other set of drawings that I saw on the night showed a building in the area of the retention pond, a future building.
And that is on the border of the retention pond. The retention pond has been preserved. It hasn't been affected by it at all. It's another outbuilding that just butts up to the south border of the retention pond.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a little tiny piece that says in outline, this is new building.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't crazy, so. And you did, you will complete a stormwater maintenance agreement? With the city?
Yeah.
For the retention pond?
You'll do all of that when you send your escrow and do all of your recording for it. Lindsay will have all of that. And that's the few items left on your engineer's memo, just your SWIP, your pre-con, your stormwater maintenance, and Lindsay will take care of all of that. Any other questions? Seeing none. How does the commission feel?
I move that we recommend to the city council to approve the conditional use permit for Spencer Knight located at seventeen forty-one North, two thousand West.
Motion by Lyle.
Second.
Second by Greg. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, city council next week, six thirty.
Next week is six thirty? Okay.
And then that'll be your, your final meeting.
I thought February first would be, is that next week?
Yeah, sorry, that's next week. Yep.
All right, thanks.
Yep.
Is that six thirty or seven?
Six thirty. Yep. Thank you. Okay, next, public hearing to consider the request of a conditional use permit for a four thousand square foot accessory building for Adam Lambert located at fourteen ninety-five North, fifteen hundred West. Is there a motion to enter the public hearing?
I move that we enter the public hearing.
Motion by Lou.
Second.
Second by Brandon. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We are now in the public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that would like to say anything regarding this? Come on up. State your name and address, please.
Brent Frost, fourteen fifty-four North, seventeen hundred West. It's a kitty corner to the building that it's in the request. My, two things that I'm concerned with is noise and traffic, if this is gonna be used for any kind of commercial use or business use. We've seen so many in our neighborhood now that running shops out of their garages and the noise and things like that. And I don't know the size of the building, which way it's gonna lay out, are the doors, bay door's gonna be facing the street?
Uh, do you wanna?
Behind the building?
I say, do you wanna pull up the?
Yeah, the next one.
The site plan. Keep going. Uh, no, go up like this. Ooh. Well, yeah, that works. So this should be headed north, just to help you.
Right. I, fifteen hundred North, the, the two doors are gonna be facing fifteen hundred North?
Correct.
Okay, so they're gonna have to cut more driveways in there and have more access to it from there. There's also a garage, full-size garage behind that building. So I'm wondering why they need four hundred or four thousand square foot, why they need more than what the city allows when there's a whole nother outbuilding out there the size of a garage. My concern is gonna be used as a storage or a business. I'm wondering what kind of electricity they're gonna have coming in, what kind of, are they gonna have a sewer line run out to the street so they've, they got capability to run a full shop in their garage?
So here's, and I'll let the applicant come up and answer all these questions, so don't worry. But here's the layout of where the building will be in relation to the home. So it looks like they'll actually be taking down that old barn. So that gives you a better
Yes.
Layout.
Okay.
And there will be sewer, there is a restroom in it. So, but I'll let him answer all those for you.
That's, that's my concern, why they needed a bigger building than what the city allows.
Perfect.
Okay? That was all my questions.
Just a clarification.
Yes.
It isn't an issue whether the city allows it or not. If it exceeds a certain size, they're required to come in and have it reviewed.
Right.
But we do allow buildings of this size.
Right, okay. All right. That was my concern, that it's not gonna be used as a commercial or a business. You know, people have their hobbies and things in there, and if they get out of line, you know, they run a four forty line in instead of a two twenty line, there's just these are the concerns that I had, to what it's gonna be used for. I have no problem if it's gonna be used. Put your RV in, put your toys in, those kind of things, we all understand. But if they're gonna use it as anything for a commercial, then I have a concern with it.
Could I just comment on that?
Yeah, of course.
Since it's a residential zone, to get a, to have a, to get a business license, they'd have to qualify for the requirements for a residential business. And one of the requirements for the residential business is it has to have no impact on neighbors. In other words, it's confined to the building of the house. It's not creating noise, pollution or anything else.
No employees.
So, or traffic. So in other words, business should be as usual, whether they use it for business or not, if it's in a residential zone.
The next little question I've got on it, you know, there, we're on fourteen fifty North, we have so many water problems now. I mean, we're pumping into the gutter twenty-four seven lately. And is this gonna have any kind of effect or bearing on the, on the way that water's gonna be routed? Is it gonna run down into the gutters instead of into the yards?
I'm guessing this is slab on grade, but I'll let him answer that. But no, they'll, per building code, they'll have to address all of that when they come in for their permit.
Fine, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
One more thing, sir, is if you have complaints or concerns, you can file a complaint with the city now.
Yes.
We have a code enforcement officer that'll come out and look at it.
Or the, what they're using the building for.
Or, or for, yeah, whether it's a business, if you assume it's a business, or anything else in the neighborhood.
All right, that was our concern, and you've addressed it apparently. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Is there anyone else? State your name and address, please.
Shane Merrill, thirteen sixty-five West, fifteen hundred North. Before I get started, I'd just really like to say I'm, I know the Lamberts, and I'm really thankful that they're a good family moving into our neighborhood, so I want them to know right off the bat that we're not in a fight here, we just have questions, and so.
Of course. That's what it's for. I like that you all came.
Don't want them to think we're ganging up on them because we're really happy that they're moving into our neighborhood. But I, I as well have some concerns because of the fact that I've had the Lambert's company do some work for me, and they do very good work. And I, I know some of the kind of work that they do, and my concerns are are they gonna be using that as a storage facility for some of their work and stuff, which is fine, but I know that they do some work with large pieces of metal. They have metal working equipment and their lumber. And that's fine if they're gonna store that there, but I, my concern is big trucks coming in with that kind of stuff, forklifts running around, and that's my only concern at this point in time.
Residential business license requirements would, would handle that.
Well, absolutely, but the, the, what are you calling it, a conditional use, maybe I, maybe you can define that for me.
This conditional use is allowing them just to build the building of this square footage. If they decide to function and do any sort of residential business, which applies, which allows no employees and allows no change to the neighborhood, they would have to come then back for a business license. And then they could have new restrictions that, you know, all, you know, anyone could put on. So this is just allowing them to build it as their footprint at this size.
Okay. And my, I also had the concern of drainage, so.
That's definitely a concern in that, in that neighborhood.
Those are my concerns.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Just another neighbor.
State your name and address, please.
Brett Price, fourteen seventy-one North, fifteen hundred West. Same concerns as those two guys. Worried about the business. Noise.
By the way, noise is also covered in another ordinance. We do have a, a noise ordinance for the city, regardless of what it is.
We got other people with large buildings. We just don't want the, the additional traffic and the noise.
As, as long as what they're doing inside the building doesn't disturb you, we don't regulate that.
Right.
That's, that's just the way the statute is.
Concern, that's.
Right. But you're right, it's not supposed to disturb you, it's not supposed to affect the neighborhood.
We wanna be in a residential, we don't wanna be in a commercial area, so.
Absolutely.
A concern. There is a park across the street too, so I'm sure you guys could have same concerns about, you know, maybe the kids and stuff like that, but there's a lot of extra traffic there. So, all right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else? If the applicant would like to come up and address some of these questions, that would be awesome. Just start off, state your name and address, and then just start off with your intent of why you're building the building.
My name is Adam Lambert. My address is fourteen ninety-five North, fifteen hundred West. So I do, I mean, it is primarily storage. It is for fun, too. I mean, that's the very first bay on the west side will just be strictly, strictly for my RV. And then I also have, like you said, I'm in the business of manufacturing stuff. There, there's no intent of manufacturing here, no intent of, of working. I may have some storage stuff here and there, but I do have a wood shop and a steel fab shop, but that's an Ogden. That's not at home, and there's a reason for the separation. This is, the whole purpose of this, I mean, I am gonna put a car lift in there. I do have razors for my grandkids. I have all this stuff that I pay for extra storage everywhere else. It's an ideal spot. I also understand that there's a park across the street. I look at it as I'm gonna have limited access because the park, because that park, I have two grandsons that play soccer there. And so, and I know that street just gets packed full of cars. So we are gonna have, we're gonna have times of day that we can actually access that, that yard. As far as in the drainage, it's just whatever the city requires. I mean, we're, we're taking out that much grass. We can do whatever we need to on that.
That'll really be like your slope and your rain gutters and things like that.
Yeah. Other than that, I mean, it's just, uh, just a big personal place.
Big toy box?
Yeah.
A big he shack.
Yeah, there you go. Right. I mean, I.
Could be an old term.
The one door is big enough. The, the one door is eighteen feet is what we figured the second one, and that's because we got an angle access. We've already got an existing approach from the street. Kind of anticipated with, you know, when I back, I do have a gooseneck trailer, so if I back it in the shop, it's, you know.
The, the building will be obviously insulated, right?
Yeah.
And see, and I love woodworking and things like that. I understand the noise and things. And so some of the noise that comes with inside the building will be muted because of those, that insulation.
And also, I like to watch TV at five o'clock at night. I don't, I'm not, unless it's a weekend. I don't plan to be out home at night revving my razors around. But yeah, I just, I mean, we don't plan on that.
Unless they come and play with you in there.
That's right, you know.
Playing, he'll be out there doing it every night.
That's right. So, anyway, no, it's just, and we do wanna make it look like the house. I don't wanna make like a steel shed look or anything like that. We are just wood framing it. So we do have that ability to side it and make it match better, so. Any other questions?
I, I was gonna say, did that encompass all the questions? Okay. No, I think that's great. Do you guys?
No, it makes the setback requirements and everything else.
Okay, you can sit down for a minute.
Can I go for more square footage?
No.
You better retrieve him.
Okay, is there any other comment from the public before we close? Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion, we close the public hearing?
All second.
Motion by Greg, second by Darren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, recommendation to the city council, approval or denial of the request of a conditional use permit for Adam Lambert.
I'll go ahead and recommend the approval to the city council for the conditional use for the building.
Well, approval, that would be motion by Greg, second by Lou. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, next week you'll be at city council at six thirty. Thursday, yep, sorry.
February first.
February first, and they'll sign you off, and then you can move forward with building permit. They don't get to talk at the next one, okay? Only this one. Okay, moving on, um, let's see, public hearing to consider amendments to the signs allowed in residential zones. I will let Lou or Lyle go on this one because this is your baby.
Are we, is the F and G, are we removing those?
No, we're just not at F and G yet. I'm at E.
Okay.
So it's tiny.
Yeah.
Can you pull that?
Hey, guys in the back. I was gonna say, if you wanna talk, you can just step outside. We just have to continue on. Okay, yeah, well, one of you lead with this?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and lead.
You explained it last night, so it should be pretty.
Lou, we need to open the public hearing.
Not having a public hearing. Oh, we are, sorry.
That's right.
Yes.
Well, then that got screwed up, okay. I see where Brandon was messed up. Sorry. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion, we open the public hearing for the sign.
Motion by Greg.
Second.
Second by, who is that? Brandon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're in the public hearing. Sorry, I see what you're saying now because it got separated.
I know, it's so tiny.
Yeah. Is there anyone in the public that has a comment on the new sign ordinance? Well, it's not even new, we just haven't implemented it, so. Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Darren, second by Greg. Little Greg, will you go tell them to step out? Thank you.
Step outside even further.
Or shut the door. Okay, motions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I probably can't skip around, so we probably have to just continue on. So, a recommendation to the city council, approval or denial of the Dirks Plumbing site plan located at twenty-eight oh, sorry, twenty-nine oh eight North, two thousand West. Is there a representative here for them? You're a new face.
I am new. Bill Bailey, ten thirty-nine West, two seventy-five South in Leighton.
Thank you.
Yeah, Bill Bailey.
We know your intent, obviously. Is there any questions regarding the site plan for him? This might be easy for you, if no one has any questions.
See, there's a commercial property on the south and residential property in the north, is that correct? That's why you're putting a fence on the north, but not on the south, is that right?
Right. Yeah, that'll be a privacy fence, six-foot privacy fence.
And their engineer, will you just leave it on one, Brandon? And their engineer, will you just leave it on one, Brandon? Sorry, I, I know you're being really good, but just leave it on one for a second. This is M one, right? Oh, sorry, C two, C two. Yeah, sorry, C two, I'm sorry.
All right, I just wanted to confirm that, because otherwise, instead of a fence, it would be a wall.
Yeah, C two, sorry, that was my bad. Your engineer's memo was spot on, so.
Yeah.
I don't personally have any questions.
And there, there is an existing access to two thousand West already there. I mean, I'm talking relative to the DOT.
This is the one.
That'll be a new access, that we got approval for a forty-foot access, it'll be both lots.
And this will be shared with the other lot when we did the subdivision.
Do you have a cross-access agreement for that?
Um, we have that, a cross-access agreement, and that should be in the U dot.
You do, it was approved with the site plan, I mean, sorry, the subdivision. When we did this as the subdivision for the two lots, you did a cross access.
Wanted to make sure, because you're crossing property lines.
Didn't mean to step on your toes if you wanted to answer that question.
You're good.
That was part of your site plan when we changed it to the two lots.
I just have a question, is this an, an expansion, or are you going to shut down the one on Highway eighty-nine?
We will be moving the one on Highway nine, so, yeah. Yeah, that one's always been just a little too small, not a big enough pipe yard. It's just, we haven't been able to have as much inventory, and so this will give us a chance to.
I appreciate the convenience.
It's a better location. Okay, anything else regarding the site plan? Do we have a motion?
I move that we recommend the city council to approve Dirk's Plumbing Site Plan located at twenty-nine oh eight North, two thousand West.
Motion by Lyle.
Second.
Second by Greg, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Stay up here, because then we can talk about your sign, but next week, city council at six thirty. This will, that'll be your final approval on your site plan. Okay, this is recommend to the city council, approval or denial of Dirk's Plumbing Sign located at twenty-nine oh eight North, two thousand West. Is there any questions for the applicant?
I didn't see a actual.
I.
I didn't see a size of the sign.
Exhibit of what it looks like.
Page, left corner in the bottom, that's our West Haven store, and it's going to be the exact sign.
But it had the dimensions.
Oh, there it is, six by twelve.
Yeah.
Should be exactly like that, yeah. And the building will be exactly like that, so.
I think it meets our.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any questions for him? Do we have a motion?
I, I motion that we recommend to the city council approval of the Dirk's Plumbing Sign located twenty-nine oh eight, two thousand West.
Motion by Darren.
I'll second.
Second by Lyle, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, both items will be on city council next week, six thirty.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay, now, the recommendation to city council, approval or denial of the amendments to the sign allowed in residential zones. Now you can have your time, Lyle.
Okay, Lou put together this, Lou did all the work on this for the, as you can see, for the signs, for the, in the A one zone. But a resident was concerned, a residence ca, a resident contacted me and was concerned about the setback. We couldn't find it, he couldn't find it anywhere in the code. And so I did some research, and long story short, we found it, we've had some discussion, and rather than trying to make, have them shoot, you know, go after the, trying to find it, we just were adding the setback onto that, that section D.
It's the same section that sets all the requirements, talks about when they can put the sign out and so forth. And all we've simply done is, and that also talks about the size of the sign, this now adds to that, the setback of the sign. So they can go one place and find out all the information they need to for sign placement.
So it's just pretty real, it's pretty cut and dry.
Okay, do we have a recommendation?
I recommend approval of the amendments to signs allowed in residential zones.
Motion by Brandon.
Second.
Second by Lou, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item, public hearing to consider approval of the updates to the subdivision ordinance as mandated by SB one seventy-four. Do we have a motion to go on the public hearing?
I move that we open the public hearing.
Motion by Lou. Second by.
I'll second.
Lyle, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in the public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a comment regarding this item? If none, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion we close the public hearing. I'll second.
Motion by Brandon, second by Darren, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, recommendation to the city council, approval or denial of the updates to the subdivision ordinance. I have to say, guys, we killed it.
In that regard, we don't want to kill it again, so I recommend to the city council, approval of the updates to the subdivision ordinance as mandated by SB one seven four.
I'll second.
Motion by Lou, second by Darren, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, wonderful, guys, good work. Next, discussion, make sure I'm not missing anything. Appointment of the housing committee members, this is, has nothing to do with our subdivision ordinance. This will be a committee that meets, I'm not sure exactly when, but they'll meet periodically to discuss our moderate income housing reports and trends, and just stay up on some things that help us make sure our yearly reports are on point and that we're meeting everything we need to that we've agreed to by the state. So I know that Lou has volunteered to be one of the members, is there anyone else that would like to be? And let me say it with this, it doesn't have to be a forever. If you want to try it and your schedule does not work with it, we can put someone else in the slot. So I don't want anyone to think like, wow, this is a year rest of my term commitment. So I would like it to fluctuate somewhat, not every month, but annually.
You have to guess, I mean, are we talking weekly, monthly?
I've talked to David Jay, he's a representative from the city council, and he says possibly once a month.
Okay, there you go.
I mean, demand changes that, but the tentative plan is about once a month.
I have an interest in it, but I wouldn't feel bad if somebody else wanted to.
How many people do they want on there?
We just need two.
For most.
I'll, I'll try it.
You'll try it?
I can, I can try it, too.
Okay, well, Lou is one of them.
Oh, so, never mind.
He volunteered.
That's true, he volunteers, you could take Greg.
You guys want to duke it out?
No, no.
Let's try, and you are more than welcome to attend.
That's all right, I'm already on the trails committee.
Okay, there you go, there you go. So let's do Lou and Greg. And Jason, you, you can go attend, I'm, they might not be videoed or live, but if you want to attend a couple of meetings and eventually take his position if he doesn't want to do it, you're welcome to. So don't feel like it's a no, you can't show up.
I, I feel offended, I'm not going to show up now.
You may get it month two, Jason.
Greg has to go to one meeting, and then after that, it may be yours.
On top of that, it wouldn't hurt to have someone on the, in the wings in case, you know, one of them couldn't make it either, so.
Yeah, so you just don't feel like you can't go now, because if you, if there's a day that works for you and you can go, go. I don't want to discourage anyone. Okay, now, discussion, no, we did that, consent items, approval of the minutes dated January eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
I recommend we approve the minutes, January eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
Motion by Greg.
Second.
Second by Brandon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd also like to make caveat, caveat that Mackenzie did a fantastic job on the minutes.
Wonderful. Okay, report on assignments, Brandon.
Well, I've been here yesterday and today, last week, Wednesday, and. Plus, plus my work is pretty.
I feel the same way.
Plus my work is pretty busy right now, but.
And you never once brought any treats?
My chip, I have a tear for chip right now. So, next time, remember that's my New Year's resolution to bring some more to.
To bring what?
Remember my New Year's resolution is to bring some more to this report on assignment, so.
Oh, yeah.
Next meeting is going to be fantastic.
I like the fact that you wore your hat.
Yeah, they were twinners.
He had a hat on his shirt, he's so good at that.
Yep.
I like that, okay, uh, Lyle.
Okay, you know, when you get old and you worry about losing your memory, alls you got to do is work on a grant. Yours cognitive just increases. The Parks Committee, we met last Thursday, and Katie Williams has been asked by the mayor to, to be the new chair or to chair the meeting, which I think. Well, she's, he asked, I'm sorry.
Wait a second.
And he asked her to be the new, to be the new chairman of the Parks Committee, we've never had one, Ken's always ran it. And so what we, we did, what we said, we sat down and discussed just the goals for the city, future goals, what we want to see done, like that property across the street from Walquist and things like that. We just kind of laid out where we're at for the next couple of years. Also, the timing, instead of meeting on Wednesdays, we're going to move it to Mondays at nine, because then it won't cut in the public work stays, and they're already here for a staff meeting. So, anyway, and then, but we're, we're, we're talking, I mean, anyway, we're just looking, working on the goals. But then I also, we're, we're working on the Mountain View Playground, uh, Mountain View Park Playground. And Katie has already got the grant, grant submitted, and then I met with her last Friday for an hour or so. Because this Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant that we have, this federal grant for the other matching funds, it's quite a, it's not as bad as the one that I did last year, but there's, it's more detailed because it's a government grant. And so we just kind of doled out assignments, and we'll be focusing that on next Monday. But other than that, everything's just moving right along. The grant's not due until first of March, so we've got some time to get it done, but we're just starting to ramp up for the, for the year, so, anyway, that's all I've got.
Lou?
Nothing to report.
Darren?
Nothing to report, and just apologize for being late to work session, some of us have jobs and have to work.
Lou didn't say anything, so I'm going to let slide.
I see it's fifteen minutes early.
Oh, wow. Greg, do you have anything?
I have nothing, and I recommend we adjourn this meeting.
Well, I'm not done.
Oh, all right, sorry.
We have other members that especially wore a suit coat.
If you wore a suit, you should talk.
I know, hopefully you have something good. Greg, you got anything? Jason?
I had a couple of segments, one was to update the training spreadsheet, added a tab in there for people to put links. So if you find useful links for trainings, you can put them on the first tab, there's a twenty twenty-three tab for those hours, there's twenty twenty-four tab, it's nice and empty for us all to go and start using for recording training hours. I wasn't able to attend last Wednesday, but I did try to make those sheets.
You did awesome on that.
It actually helped.
Yeah.
It really, really helped.
Yep, and that helped us get through that work session, so I'm going to throw some more stuff your way soon. Okay, I have talked enough for the past couple of weeks, so you guys know, all know what's going on. Okay, now you can make your motion.
Hey, I got one question for you.
Oh, yeah.
Next week, the next meeting, the work session.
Yes.
We talked about that last night briefly.
Yes, so, sorry, well, everyone was here last night.
Yeah.
So the next goal for our work session will go on to the mixed use for river block.
Oh, that's true, okay, okay.
So I'll be sending stuff out for that, and that's kind of our next steps. The mixed use, however they're going to do, we'll at least have one, they'll probably come back to us, and then we'll, in between that, we'll work on the C two.
Okay, so we'll be prepared for that for the.
Yep.
The last of the.
Well, yeah, I'll, let's see how the mixed use one goes, and then I'll know if they're coming back again, or if they're going to need more time, or however that's.
We'll tentatively be ready for the one and fifteen end of the month.
And everybody's aware of that joint.
Oh, yeah, there's the joint work session meeting February sixth at six thirty with Black Pine. So I think that sums up everything. Now you can move on.
I want to stay the rest of the night.
Hey, it's only seven-ten, so it's like, it's like we got out fifteen minutes early.
I know. I, I think we should stay now. Motion we go home.
Motion by Greg.
Second.
Second by Brandon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful job, guys. Me too.